Making noise says it's 5:30. So we call the meeting of the US Republican Library District Board of Trustees to order. And roll call, gentlemen.
Condon, here.
Deal.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Martyr.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Kamblin.
Here.
Wallers.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
5:31. US Republican Library District exists to provide quality library services which will effectively meet the informational, educational, and recreational needs of district residents of all ages, putting special emphasis on supplying popular materials, providing reference services, and assisting students of all ages in needing their educational needs. We'll move on to number five, approval of minutes.
My question is for both of your minutes, February 26, 2025, both session minutes from February 26, 2025, and financial page in the United States from February 26, November 20.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any questions?
Appreciate you for helping the chairman and committee. I got sick. I got from Seattle and we both got sick, my wife died. I wasn't feeling well that night.
Glad you didn't share it with them.
No.
All right, roll call, please, gentlemen.
Deal.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Martyr.
Yes.
Ramirez.
Yes.
Kamblin.
Yes.
Wallers.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Assistant Library Director, wish you... Correspondents?
I do have correspondence, just a little bit. We have a thank you card from School District 308 for allowing them to their Learning and Innovation Department to have a folding meeting at our building. They sort of thank us for helping get the projector out and letting them come in early. We have a request to add a teen book return slot. Right now, we have, at this building, we have audiovisual, we have adult, and we have youth, but we don't have a separate slot for teens. And they said it would make our lives much easier if we added one. And then we had a comment that displays our nice, but they are disappointed to see that we did not do a display for Women's History Month. They want us to highlight a segment of materials that reflects 50% of the users, and they said that our staff is very... Just request for Women's History Month display. We did have a women's display, but I guess it wasn't specifically women's history. And that's all the correspondence.
Teen slot?
You know how we have the book drops?
Yeah.
And they're labeled, we have them labeled as youth, adult, and audiovisual, because when we added those, we did not have a teen department. That came later, and we just never relabeled the book return slots, which...
So they need a label.
We could change the signs to include young adult materials.
They promised to come a lot. Thank you. Financials. Let's take a look at the fund balance, revenue, and expense reports. Anything we should be aware of?
The only thing I have noted in this section, this is a shorter time period, because it'll been three weeks since our last meeting. On page 14, I just wanted to point out that our, we have received over 600% of our expected interest income. And also miscellaneous income is at over 300% of what we expected. Those are TIF payments that kept a bunch of miscellaneous income. All good news that we have more money than we thought we would. Otherwise, I don't think there's anything of note out of the ordinary in any of our fund balances.
What about the interest?
It's just the high interest rates, I think. The interest rates are a lot higher than what we had projected.
Which page is that?
It's page 14. The third one that I would interest in of...
Action.
So do we have a money manager? Are you doing that for us, or...?
PMA managers. And then we also have some money in the money funds.
So our budget was 14, and we brought in 92.
Yep.
That's impressive.
Definitely better that it's going that way than the opposite.
Could I have motion on the financials, please?
I'll make mention to the fund balance and budgeting of special awards.
Second. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Ramirez?
Yes.
Kamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Okay. Constable?
That starts on page 23. Again, it was only a three-week period, so it's much shorter than what we normally see. Only things that would really be out of our ordinary are going to be up page 24, the interiors for business. We are actually replacing these meeting room tables that we're using right now. Some of you probably have some very lopsided, rocky tables, and some of you might have ones that are okay. AJ's been trying to fix them. The wheels will not stay on some of these tables, so we're replacing them with new ones. And these older ones, I think we are going to donate to, is it the Yorkville Public Library? Yes, Yorkville Public Library is going to take these. So that is the deposit for the new tables. We're actually going to have 18 tables set up in this room. There'll be 15, so it's always set up for 30 people, since it's a larger room than us, we go. We thought it'd be nice to have one building that can just host larger groups in general, tables. And that's the only bill I have noted, unless anyone has a question on anything.
Could we have a motion on the constable, please?
Motion for approval in March 2025. Bill is a amount of $324,503.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Now, any more questions or comments? Captain, please. Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Kamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Condon, the same. Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Our assistant directors report.
A couple of things. On page 28, there's a photo of our outreach department. He's been very busy visiting senior living facilities, lots of school visits. He's working with the junior highs on a battle of the books event that we would be hosting. Our items circulated, kind of follow like a seasonal up and down pattern. We're on the upswing typically December and January. Our lower circulation numbers just because of the holidays. So those numbers are going up as we would expect them to. Also, pretty consistently have right around 200 to 300 new patrons every month, which is a good thing. Page 29. Let's see, our youth services helped a drive-in movie. The kids made their own little boxes. It was really cute. And they had, I believe they had almost 50 children come to that. And then they watched a movie, of course, in their little cars. So it was a very fun event.
What movie did they watch, do you know?
I don't know what they watched.
Was it Mickey Mouse Race, her movie?
Yeah. That was a fun one. Our e-resource use under online statistics, that continues to go up every month. I think just as more people know about it, and also we've increased the number of items people are allowed to use, so we do see that continuing to go up as well as the actual physical items. The other thing we're going to mention was this new thing we have going. We partnered with the county on this. It's called "Chronologue", and we have a slide here to kind of give you an idea of how it works. But basically, you set up a post. If people can take a picture from the exact same spot, and then they upload it to this website, so you can kind of see the same view all different seasons over the course of years. This is particularly what I think I'm going to add, is actually even so bad for it. And so there's going to be a post out behind this building, looking out at the prairie. It's going to have a sign about how you upload your photo. This gets mounted onto a post, and then your phone, sits in there, and you can take the exact same view for every picture to get this kind of... So we're going to have one at Montgomery, looking at the prairie, one at the barn, looking at the barn, I think.
From the barn.
From the barn, and then one at Oswego, maybe where this bridge is, where the bridge is potentially going. I could pass this around to him, and he wants to take a look. It's got our library logo on it. I think the side turned out really nice, much. Where'd they get them from? They're super nice looking.
Who's doing it?
This is with...
Candlecrack?
Candlecrack, yeah, yes. And I think you could actually pull up the map of all the different chronologues that are out there right now. I don't believe we could add it yet.
Where do I go?
Just, I just wanted to see that. It's like, you can see it's mostly starting in the U.S., but there's not a ton of them. I don't know how long it's been around. Pretty cool.
They're the first in the neighborhood.
Who's that?
Old flip phone, that's not your work.
Ooh, I want to look on, actually. So over the smartphones. And yeah, so this is, I think, a neat way for people to kind of see our library and also to interact.
Maybe we need a live webcam.
Yeah, kind of same type of thing.
My wife is fascinated with the eagles.
Oh, yeah.
We've always gone, you know, babies. But I don't believe in the numbers they were talking about, the number of people that are looking at that.
Yeah.
The Boy Scouts install a bat house, right?
Yeah.
What if you had a live camera on the bats?
Cool.
Infrared camera.
Come on, just maybe you can send that song. We can have the book, yeah.
That's cool.
Do you know that those are installed, too? We have a little thing, just...
We are installing them, so AJ will install them.
Cool. Quick question on the e-use stuff. Does that cause an increase, cost at some point? Or is it kind of like we have a whole bunch of bandwidth and then somebody did another one? Is there any cost on the e, she said it's stat or...?
Oh, yes, so we have a certain amount that we allow people to check out each month, and then they're kind of cut off. I don't know that our curve was set, like we stopped letting people use it.
It's really hard.
Not now, but that is an option.
It is an option.
If the cost gets to be, if it does, we kind of cut off.
Do we get that frequently?
We have not, I don't think we've ever had that.
Well, she had said that you use stats or not, which is good, but...
Like all of our hoopla and all the e-books, people check out. I'm just gonna tell you that right now. They can win my book club. I got other audiobooks that are not on there that I want to... I think we kind of just try to predict as the e-use goes up, you know, maybe more money's going to that than to different stuff like magazines. We're kind of eliminating, they're just not that popular anymore, so...
It's not me that I got one or two money funds, too.
No, I think cut off. Like, no more for you this month. Is that for me?
That's it?
Unless there's questions, yep.
Because I have a motion to approve the director's report, please.
I move to approve the director's report.
Second. Number seven.
Second.
Thank you. Jim. Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Kamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Okay, somewhere... Did I see something about the financials, any reports?
I have some minutes.
In the minutes.
Yes.
But basically, we're looking at the first blush of the budget for next year, and that will be coming back...
In April, I believe.
April?
Okay.
We'll see it again in April, so... That's what the finance committee was doing. And we were looking at what, five years out? We don't, do we need another committee meeting?
Usually it goes to the whole board after that.
Whole board, okay, all right. All right, moving on. Unfinished business. Unpaid leaves of absence, family bereavement leave.
It's going to be on page 30.
Okay.
This, so we have an unpaid leave of absence. We are just adding in section eight on page 31. This is required to have this in the state of Illinois. I did make one additional change to section six at just quote suggestion that we look at how we have worded for our national guard reserve duty, just to add in that we can extend the leave length if someone is called up for active duty. We're not like automatically fired after 30 days. So I added that in as well. So we have two additions.
We saw this last month for first reading, so this is second reading. If someone wants to get us started with a motion and a second, then we can discuss any questions or comments. It's all gone by legal also?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the unpaid leave of absence, family bereavement. We can have an act, you know, so...
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Now, questions, comments? I like the addition of section six. Jim, roll call, Jim. Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Kamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're looking at purchasing policy along the... You looked at this last month also?
Yes.
So walk us through it a little bit, please.
So we have a purchasing policy that I know has been updated in quite a few years. The numbers don't match the actual legal requirements anymore. This policy is from the state of Illinois. It's their kind of recommended policy to follow all the legal requirements. So it is directly off the Illinois State law site as a recommended policy. It just kind of puts us in alignment of what can we approve without the board voting? What can we not approve about? And so it's very clear when we need to go to bid, when we need to have board approval, what type of stuff can the library purchase on their own. As it says on page 34, we have halfway down the page. The smaller amounts are, they're suggested about. We could adjust those if you think it's more reasonable to have different amounts listed as well. And when it's a legal requirement, it's the $25,000. We have to have it forwarded that way.
Can we... Get a little place here. Okay, last page, emergency expenditures.
Yes.
I'd like to propose changing in section B, the last line, instead of should, will.
Or shall.
Or shall. Will or shall, either one, a little right.
Must be required.
Yeah. If it's an emergency, then it always ends up actually.
Okay. We'll change that.
Okay, do you have a motion on purchasing policy, please?
I move to approve the updated purchasing policy.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
My only comment is I'll never forget when they were building Fox Chase Elementary School and they accepted the lowest bid for the electrical. I don't know if any of you were around to remember what happened, but... I lived on the street, lived on... I know you did. And half of the electrical work was done, and it was all wrong. And they accepted the lowest bid. And of course, they had to hire another contractor to come in and redo everything. And it delayed, it delayed the construction of the building, too, at the time. It was, it was a big error. And the person who accepted the lowest bid from looked fine. You know what I mean? I mean, they just looked like, oh, they're going to be great, they're going to do a good job. And I know you must have experienced some of those kinds of, you must have experienced some of that along the way in some of your experience. I'll never forget that one. So that does happen. And so they ended up, it ended up costing a lot more than what it originally was supposed to be for the electrical work in that building.
When I was in, I was in my second career. We were doing, or we were working with Plainfield School District. They built Solid, which is in the, in Joliet. But they built Plainfield Solid. For the ethernet wiring in the building, they decided that the electrical contractor must know what he's doing, so they hired him to do that. So all of these guys were running ethernet wiring all over the building. You can imagine the size of that building. And every time they ran out of a spool, they said, they displaced it together and went on with the run. And then we got called in to pull in, pull all the wiring out of the building and redo the whole thing with a home run, so... Yeah. That was even more costly.
Oh, yeah. So that does happen. So, you know, I read the first one, you know, setting up the bid, the lowest, what is the worst word? Reason, right? Is that the word? Response, false.
Okay. You did vote on that, didn't we? Okay, just checking.
Yeah.
Fund balance policy.
This was a new policy that we were suggested by our financial advisors to add, especially now that we are not zeroing out our general fund at the end of every fiscal year. And this was run, passed both our financial advisors and the attorney for suggestive changes, and they thought this was a pretty good policy.
Could I have a motion and a second on fund balance policy, please?
I move to approve the fund balance policy.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Does this impact anything we're going to do differently in the fiscal year versus...?
No. I think this is pretty standardized to what we've been doing. We just haven't had our written policy. I think the main thing is that we have to move back this up where we move money to different codes.
Okay. Jim. Freeman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Kamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to circle back to open space concept plan. We talked about this at our last meeting.
We also sent it out to some other public entities, and we got some comments that concerning flooding impacts on pier shipping, some other questions they had that were of a technical nature. So I'll go back to the architect to get some responses, but I wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else that you wanted me to ask the engineers as well. Comments or thoughts about either of the two concepts.
I know last month, Pete, you had a concern about the longer bridge versus the shorter.
Yeah, I mean, you know, usually we have to do bridges on the bridge, we have to do mains on all, but hopefully the shared mains, but still, the longer the structure, the more expensive the maintenance. So I would generally kind of err towards a smaller structure, but that would be my only selection criteria for deciding that, but it's just one thing in its favor, I guess. I think it's, the shorter bridge seems to bring the site a little bit more into... It seems a little more intimate with the site, because you have the sort of that zigzag going down to the bridge, where you cover a little more ground rather than a straight shot, you know? Plus, it's less expensive, which I think is a plus. And I have a general...
Why is it less expensive?
Well, because of the bridge length.
Because of what?
The bridge length.
Okay. So if we did that instead, because the bridge is going to be concrete?
No, I think it would be steel, well, concrete foundation. They said it would be like a, a con span type, contact bridge, which you see on a lot of, or paths around the area. Those steel, brown steel ones, usually with the wood deck are typical. So, you know, just the longer span is more expensive.
And is F on option one, is that all wood?
You seem to imply like, what's that type of, like, wood decking that's like durable?
Oh, is that composite decking?
Yeah.
Is that what we're using?
Something like that.
I don't think that's been specified yet.
Because I asked about the maintenance on the boardwalk and what type of material will be used. And he said that, he said something to the degree of, I can't remember the name of the specific...
Yeah, I remember.
Material.
Specifics, but he also said that it didn't really matter. Both options were going to have the same type of...
Oh, I was just wondering if it's wood, would they have to replace it?
Right.
Yeah.
I think the, it wasn't...
I think the, it wasn't, he wasn't saying specifically that it would be one thing, but it was like encouraging like the more durable or...
Passion, yeah.
Resin or... Yeah.
Usually you see it, I think they're rough cut, rough stone.
I think the word he used was synthetic.
Synthetic?
I thought that was synthetic.
It looks something like a chicken.
I don't specify.
So is this solely our project or is the park maybe involved or...
It would be a partnership. At this point, we don't, we still have, for those of us, we could all kind of have to stretch out.
So do they have to make a, the two or is it just ours?
It were, our first step was this.
This. So we have to kind of pick an option in the senate room or we send it to both options or...
Do however the board would like to do and maybe it's a good partnership for grants and we're able to decide.
What is the grant cycle? You said what, submission was September?
Submission July first.
July first.
Through September.
Which grant was that?
I wanted the park district.
I want to say was, most likely?
Yeah, that sounds right. There's another, the IDAP grants that the IDAP has for pedestrian bridges, I would strongly recommend we spend for that too. They're on a two-year cycle, I'm not sure when the next call will be, but for example, Montgomery Building Bridge, overall thirty, it's, you know, like three million dollars. Their partner in the Fox Valley, they got an IDAP grant which funds, you know, like two and a half million or something of that project. So I think that's the cap, so we could be longer than, but it's like an eighty percent, you know, cost share. So we definitely want to see if we can qualify for that one. You know, the, I don't know if it was concerned about the erosion of the piers, but, you know, flooding on, well, Bonzi Creek is kind of legendary. You know, I was on the, on the technical advisor committee for the nineteen ninety-six flood report that was done for Bonzi and it's, I think I might have mentioned this, it's a very flashy type, they call it watershed because it's, it, flood flows come up real fast because its headwaters is really the Fox Valley Mall and that went in in the early seventies and there wasn't a lot of detention there, so you get a lot of runoff that comes flying down. Now, there is some pretty significant flood storage in, you know, in Montgomery and along the golf course, but you still get some pretty big flows down here. And the flood insurance studies are old, so, you know, they'll be required to use best available data for the study, but the point I'm trying to make here, I think we pulled it clumsily, is that they might meet all the requirements, but we may see those flows exceed it anyway. So I think we should encourage whoever we select for design to do some flows above what, what they might believe are the regulatory hundred-year flows. And sometimes you can design such that the structure stays, you know, is at one elevation and you can have flood bypass that goes around, you know, like on the boardwalk or something, so you don't lose any of your valuable asset, but you still allow additional flow to go through. So it's something that I'm sure that the engineering firm that was part of this was a strand or...
Yes.
Okay, well, anyway, whoever, you know, they're competent, but they may not have direct experience on Bonzi Creek, so we're just going to encourage when we write a, we put together an RFQ or when we interview them to talk about that, so we make sure that they provide enough guidance there to make, you know, make sure our structure is going to survive. And just, just to give you some historical perspective, there's a flood control structure out in Montgomery, it's a park few estates, it was a flood control firm that was built by the Illinois State, or by the Office of Water Resources. And it's been overtop three times since it was built. So, you know, the historic flooding's been higher than, you know, the regulatory or their predicted flooding. So, and I think that'll continue just because of climate change and, you know, the, there's a hundred-year rainfall design standard that's issued by the State Water Survey and the last edition of that, which was put out a couple of years ago, golden seventy-five, was up twenty percent from the previous version. So, and it's based on statistical history of storms in Illinois. So that's kind of what we're seeing. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we do everything we can to at least, our bridge, we're not so concerned about whether, you know, that it's cut off, because it's not like serving as subdivision or something, right? So if the approaches are flooded, it's not a big deal. What we don't want to do is lose the structure because that's the real cost for us. So I think that can all be factored in pretty much.
Related to that, I was in a Philly meeting about three years ago, there were a couple of folks who were there to discuss the developments that had not yet happened on Wolf Road. And their big concern was the water. They had satellite pictures of the floods and all of that would potentially flow faster into the golf course across Wolf Road, Bonzi Creek, so.
In fact, Ben Golf Course is very susceptible to flooding too.
Yeah, when that water comes over that hill and it's, it looks crazy. And it's dirty, right? And so that goes, that's going to go under our bridge?
Yeah.
That water?
Around or over it or under it. Go under or over it.
Yeah, almost not go over. It defines the purpose of the bridge.
There's a reason why the bridge on Adams Street got washed out at one point in time. And you look at how high that is with replacements. It's not going to be that high, I can't imagine.
No, but like you said, we can do other things to allow water to go around this and, you know, not, yeah.
Is, we okay with this now? Next thing on the agenda is boardwalk too. We'll hold onto that till the end of the meeting and anyone who would like and can stay, if they can.
New business, starting a project. Good. We got a video up.
Oh, this is, it's, hopefully they'd like to use, give them a good time about an erosion issue.
Does that relate to these pictures?
And then those are the suggestions by the garden club for, for around the building.
I'm not discussing this test or something.
No, no.
There's no psychologize test.
So, pretty quiet. Wall of plants. That could hold up the erosion that we have in the back.
And the garden club's going to do this by themselves?
No, this is... The garden club started it because they were asking behind our building, the water's coming out of the building.
Right.
So they said, well, could you come? And we spoke with our landscape architect, they came, they said, well, the water issue is not as big as the fact that there's a huge erosion issue in the back. So we'll need to stop that. So we backed to the garden club because they were going to plant this spring, but it looks like we're going to fix the erosion and the water, the standing water issue up the back of the building using some kind of a, or we can do a board that they're... Isn't very cool.
So they're an enthusiastic group.
Who wants to spend money.
I have some experience with them. Well, they don't want to spend money. In fact, all the plants are going to come from their yards. They're all going to be prairie plants. And there's an area, if you haven't seen it, when you go into the three-season room of the quiet road and you look down at the creek, there's like a high-shaped area back there that they're going to plant. But in order to do it, there's three downspouts that run across it and we can wash out everything they do the first time we have a big rain because all the flat roof in Esquigo comes down in those downspouts. So they were all set to go, we just had to figure out how to disperse the water on the edge so that we don't create another canyon. Well, we went back for another look without snow on the ground this week and then. And some crazy person crawled out on the end where it goes like this and discovered four or five more downspouts. If you've been back there, there's a bunch of railroad ties that were put there in...
Nineteen eighty-one.
Nineteen eighty-one to shore up the back of the building and they're sort of hanging there because all these downspouts are just dumping water back there. So that sort of put the skids on anything behind the building there until we figure out what we can do because the contractor that we had with it said that he would put his guys back there in order to build anything like this. So we've got to get, we don't know if we can come across the creek with a lift and then get somebody up there to do it. We don't know if we rappel off the building and put somebody back there, but materials have to be put in there and we have to do something because the downspouts are just wide open, boom, going down that cliff. And they all come to the same area that's kind of crevasse. So talked to the garden club, they're going to postpone till next spring. So we're going to have to start. But you look at that wall of green stuff, there, right below that area, that's where the walkway comes from, the end of our building where the elevator is and goes down and then down to the creek, kind of like our new path we'll do with the open space concept that we're working on. And that would be a beautiful sight of that hill to have it looking like that. So it's going to, none of this is going to be all done at one time. It's going to be a project and a project and a project. So right now, we just have to figure out, number one, how to get those downspouts so that they're not eroding more of the hill. And we're going to need some help with somebody. The question was whether, what are they called, aquascales can help with the triangle shape because the idea was to put rocks there and have the downspouts hit the rocks, slow down and then go over the hill. And that might fit into something else that we've talked about, but, but we don't know. So it's all back there, we've got some great ideas, but it's all kind of on hold right now until we figure out how we stop the erosion.
I don't know anything about any of this, but is there, I mean, there's got to be like a landscaping engineer subtype, right? So like somebody that specializes in, in engineering landscaping, right?
Ask Pete, there's eight million types of engineers. And he's got his specialties that I heard about last year, but yeah, there's a lot of different specialties and it would be nice to get one, somebody who's done something like this before that could help us through it.
Just like consult or something like that?
Yeah. So we'll be looking for somebody and, but it's all, that's the coming attraction. And then Sarah, you want to walk through what's going to happen this spring?
So they wanted to do, they had some other ideas of what can go around the building. This is all at Esquigo. This is the Hilltop Gardeners. So you'll see there are some large rocks in front of, this is the planter in front of the Esquigo building. And then they have, these are all ideas. And then they had on the side of the sixty-four building, you'll see a green wall is back. And then they have rocks there as well. And then they have some flowers, this is right in front of the Oates Memorial. They already talked to the village of Esquigo because that's actually village of Esquigo and the village of Esquigo was okay with that opposed to water. And then the final one is we have these red donuts, but they'll be adding the yellow plants into the bottle.
They do the pots in downtown Esquigo each summer, if you've seen those. They do the pots with the little dwarfs.
The merry guardians.
In, with the little hats on and everything for Christmas. They do the pots in front of the post office, they do the pots in front of Village Hall. So, and they do that, grass for the village and that sort of thing. They talked to us too about possible storage, whether we had any space. The park district has given them storage under a new ramp that they put into Lowway School. The only problem is they put their wagons for their plant sale and everything under this ramp and then the park district decided to paint the ramp and they spray painted it and they sprayed stripes down all of their wagons and their pots and all of the stuff that they use. So they're not really happy with the park district. So we talked to them about maybe the barn or something like that being a place where they could store some of their stuff. So they want to do something because they use our meeting room every month for their Hilltop Garden Club meetings. So this is the payment to the library.
Question, on the picture with all the stones, is the weight stuff like smaller or what is the weight supposed to be?
I think that's just what came out using the program thatropolis used up to, to do that. The smallest of the rocks are about a hundred and fifty pounds because the library director was concerned about you throwing rocks through the windows.
That's what we're concerned about.
She was assured that they'd be too heavy to throw through the windows. Okay, anything else on the garden club?
Just really love that organic scene, the flowers, the floodwater area for the library. It's ours. I'm glad we're not having any fighting.
We're down to number thirteen, open session, total public, total comment of thirty minutes total. We have no public, so there are no comments. At this one time, number fourteen, closed session for purchase lease of real property for use in public body. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn and go on to executive session.
Thank you, second. Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, take a second or should we go ahead? Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.